Twenty-four, will you all rise please and join me for the pledgeable allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's do the roll call, starting with John.
John Jovanoli.
Gloria Jean.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Mioshi.
Sarah Bledsoe.
The upcoming meeting dates are January 21st, 2025, and February 18th, 2025. We have minutes from our November 19th meeting. Could I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. First item on the agenda is the seeker scoping session for Woodland Estates. I think we may want to begin. Our town council, Tom Wood, would like to review the seeker process regarding scoping.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, so I'm here this evening just to kind of focus where we are in the process. We're at the very beginning of a process. A property owner has submitted an application for a proposed project on property, as we all know, on Route 376. And it's a project with an extensive history. It dates back to the early 1980s when the town board, I remember when I first moved to the town in 1980, this was a cost level on the property. But it got through a process and it did get approvals to an extent that, and then for various reasons over the years, it's kind of lie silent. And now they've come back for processing of an application. And all property owners in the town have property rights, and the town has an obligation to respect those rights and to respect the public's rights and to go through a process. So the process is at its very beginning this evening. And it has, when an application is filed, it's initially reviewed by the town's consultants, and there's a little back and forth between the projects professionals, the engineers, the planners, the traffic consultants, the wetlands expert, you know, you name it, all of those experts. The town has such a team and they go back and forth. And when an application is deemed sufficient, it comes here to the planning board. This planning board has received that application. They've made a determination that because of what they see, the extent of the project, there's a likelihood that there may be some significant impacts. So they adopted what's known as a positive declaration, which means that the project has to be studied very thoroughly before it proceeds to any next steps. So last month was the first night of a scoping session. After a positive deck, it means the developer is going to have to prepare an environmental impact study. An environmental impact study is actually a study of all the issues, all of the perceived possible impacts that a project may have. So because, before they go out to begin that study, they have to be given a list of what are the prospective impacts. So last month, there was a open meeting and a discussion about a scoping document. A scope is like an index. So the index tells you all the chapters of all the issues that have to be studied. So many comments were made last month, and the scoping document has now been updated based on those comments to about 25 pages, listing all kinds of items that are going to have to be studied. The easiest example would be with the traffic impacts, what intersections may be affected by the project, and they are enumerated. Perhaps it's 376 and 82, 376 and 52, and there may be others that are in there. Tonight, the scoping, the planning board will continue the scoping session to see if there are any other issues that need to be addressed. And then they'll close the scoping session this evening, allow 10 days from today or through December 31st, I believe, for written comments about, you know, these are issues, impacts. And then in January, the planning board will adopt the scoping document. The applicant then goes off and with their professional team, studies those issues, makes comments, et cetera. And then that comes back to the planning board, and the planning board will decide at that point whether or not the discussion presented back to the planning board is sufficient for public discussion of those issues. Sometimes they are immediately okay. Most times, there's a little back and forth, some additional studies, et cetera. And then at one point in time, it will be deemed to be complete. And then the planning board will again schedule a public hearing, and everyone can come back and speak to the issues as addressed by the impact statement and the site plan or subdivision map that may be before the planning board. And it's a process that goes on. What we are going to do for the public certification is post on the town website, an outline of all the steps that occur in a project, not just this project, but any project. We're dealing with state laws, we're dealing with town laws and procedures. We won't have dates because a lot of the timing is based on when documents are get delivered to the town. So for dates, you'll still have to check monthly to see if it's on the town planning board agenda for the next step. But the steps will be set forth on the town website. So, you know, that's kind of where we are. We're very early in the process. There's no decisions being made, they're a long time off. The applicant doesn't like to hear me say that, but they are a long time off. It's a balancing of all the equities and issues, and we'll certainly, and I know this board particularly gives great deference and concern to everybody's concerns and issues and make sure they're studied and addressed in an appropriate manner. So that's kind of where we are tonight, and hopefully where we'll be going.
Thank you very much, Tom. That was very helpful. Before we proceed, I'll accept a motion to open the public scoping session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It's open, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Cooper. I'm a partner with the law firm of Zerrin and Steymetz, here representing the applicant. With me tonight is my colleague Vincent Padone, as well as Eric Schloembom from Insight Engineering, the project engineer. We were before you, Mr. Wood stole a lot of my thunder tonight, just to say, we're here again for the scoping session. We made a presentation at the last night, so, at the last meeting with you, so we're not going to rehash that. And we are here, obviously, to answer any questions. The only thing I would add to the scope of tonight's scoping session is, the most important thing, certainly from the applicant's perspective, and I think also from the board's perspective and the consultants, is the methodology of studying any potential impacts or areas of concern that this board would like us to look into. Because at the end of the day, when the EIS, the DEIS is presented to you, there will be a series of studies, traffic, et cetera, and we want to make sure that the methodology that we use to assess those potential impacts and mitigation, et cetera, we're on the same page as. So that's what we're most interested in hearing about tonight. Unless you have any other questions, I'll hand it over to the board and we'll sit here and listen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions by board members or comments? Any questions or comments by our professionals? With that, I'll open it to the public. We invite public comment, either for or against the project. If you do want to comment, please come to the podium, sign your name on a sign-in sheet, and let us know who you are.
My name is John Cuneli. I am a 30-year resident of Steven Drive. A couple neighbors couldn't make it today, so I consolidated some of my stuff to include their concerns, some of which we've discussed already, but I'll just reiterate. The connecting roads to Mark or Steven do create more traffic in the quiet neighborhoods. We're currently under the impression that they will be gated and deemed for emergency use only, but there will be, in fact, a gate there. The schools, one of our neighbors is on the school board, and the schools are a great concern. These units, whether they're owned or rented, will ultimately house school-aged children. We're told that Gayhead Elementary is now at full capacity. Wappinger Central School District has announced a capital project earlier this month to include additions for both junior high schools. The sheer size of the new project would make these plans insufficient already. This would impact every taxpayer in the entire district, which is the largest district, non-city school district, north of Long Island in all of the state. The question the person had asked me to ask also is, what entity owns and will own the property? Is it the same entity that will construct the proposed project?
I think those answers will be given when they complete their final scoping document.
Okay. If a proposed project is begun and fails, remember the model homes that were constructed and caused problems with looters, squatters, and a place for drugs and drinking approximately 40 years ago. The concern of the neighbor would be, who is left holding this bag? The developers are likely to quickly dismiss this possibility, but it has already happened, and it would be irresponsible not to take this into consideration. The clean and safe drinking water on the proposed property, we have heard that there are wells drilled already, and we know from sitting wells that, at this point, they could be possibly contaminated. I've heard about municipal water, I've heard about the wells, we're not sure which direction that's going. Discharge of stormwater, where will that be heading?
As a scoping session, your questions will be answered through the draft impact statement. It's not going to be, but could I just interrupt you one moment?
Sure.
Just point out a few things. First of all, when this application was filed and this process started, a multiple group of agencies were advised of the filing of it. They're divided into two groups, involved agencies and interested parties. The involved agencies are agencies that have other approval authority. The examples would be, New York State Department of Transportation will have to approve the project's entrance onto Route 376. The traffic impacts would have to be addressed as they require, because they have to give approval. The New York, the Duchess County Department of Health has to approve the water and sewer connections, et cetera. So they're the involved agencies, because they have approval authority, and there's a list of them. The other group are interested parties, who while they have no approval authority, do have perhaps an interest in the development. The biggest one of which is the Wappinger School District. So they were notified of the filing of the application, and they have the right to form, send us or the planning board, a formal comment, raising their concerns about what potential impacts the school district foresees. So that will be addressed. As far as the concern about partial construction, well, that's with any development, number one. But number two, on projects that, whatever magnitude this might end up being, if any, that's usually addressed through the process with a phasing requirement, like you have to complete this before you can do that, and things like that. So that would be addressed. The water, there's two parts to the water. One is the health department, I mentioned, but another agency is the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And anyone who drills well and draws water out of it has to get a permit from DEC for a water-taking permit. So they'll require extensive studies by the developer of, if X number of gallons is being drawn a day, what impact would it have on all the other wells? And they actually will require them to, if there are existing wells, to retest them and to monitor other adjoining wells as part of that test. Because the water under the ground is all of our water. And New York State DEC is the agency that's vested with the authority for regulating that. So those kind of concerns would be addressed through that process.
So I just...
DEC also going to look at the stormwater discharge?
Stormwater, yes, they're involved. The towns are obligated to enforce the stormwater obligations, so that it's the developer's burden to show that after, if there's a development on the property, that the flow of water off the property does not exceed its current standard, the current flows. And they would have to either, and the engineers will correct me, I don't get into right terminology, but in layman's terms, they'll have to show that they can retain the water on the site and discharge it over a period of time, or that they can absorb the water on the site, whatever the process might be. But yes, that's one of the issues.
Yeah, and the discharge, where it's going, I mean, is that...
Absolutely.
Fish Gill Creek, where we're feeding the aquifer?
Yeah.
The discharge in the...
All of that is studied and has to be approved, yes.
So that's traffic, 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 we talked about, and again, the drinking water, the schools, and that's all I got today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I think we have one lady ahead of you, just...
Hello, my name is Claire McCloskey. I live on Number 7 Mark Lane. My husband and I have lived there for over 41 years. We raised our children in a very quiet, happy, friendly, safe neighborhood. I'm very concerned that this will change greatly with the building that will be all behind us. My house backs up to the rock wall, which, beyond that, will be where all these, all this construction is. Some 30-some years ago, when my third child was a baby, every day at around noon time, 1 o'clock, there would be a siren and then blasting would occur. That's when they were trying to build back there before. We ended up with cracks in our foundation, cracks in our boiler, and a lot of distress. I don't want to see this happen again. Would this require blasting again? That's a good question. I'd like to also, just like John, very concerned about the traffic, through traffic, emissions, noise, people in our neighborhood that don't live there coming through. Harrigan Road can't handle any more traffic. It's windy, it's dangerous. There are poles and trees right on the edge of the road. It is a very dangerous road. And now with the warehouses being built, and all the people on Palin Road, in the morning, I go out to work, I have to wait quite a while to get out, because there's a lot of traffic going to the warehouses. Then we'll have Joe's Mother's Road, and we may have this. I think Hopewell is becoming very congested, extremely congested. I don't think it can take anymore. So, like John said, traffic, traffic, traffic. Speaking of the roads, I have a message for our highway department while I'm here. Our roads, Mark, Jean, Anthony, and Stephen, have never been paved in over 45 years. I've written numerous letters to Ken, and I either get no reply, or he says we have drainage issues. So, they came and they fixed a drainage issue on Jean Court, but we still have a drainage issue, apparently at Stephen and Mark, where we've had virtually a lake a few times. And I think it comes from the swamp across from Stephen, over by Flower Road. So, you know, when is it our turn? Over 45 years. So we watch everyone else get repaved while we sit there and get patched, over and over and over. So I figured I might as well use this venue to vent that. I think I made all my points, and I just have a letter that I want to submit. I think that this project would be not only a big change for our neighborhood, but for the entire town. And the stress that will put on everything, like John said, the schools, the fire, the safety, just everything, so, thank you.
Before you leave the podium, did you sign in?
I'm signing right now.
Very good, thank you. Okay. Other speakers? You, sir? You can give the letter to the clerk. Ms. McCloskey, yes, you can leave the letter with Jackie.
Hi, my name is Jamie De Silva. I live on 6 Jean Court, been there for 10 years. I just have one question regarding traffic. If they do plan on putting these gates to stop traffic in and out of Mark and Stephen into this project, what safeguards will be put into place to prevent those gates later on down the road from being lifted and removed? Because once the traffic gets so backed up on 376, three, four, five, six years on the road, what's to prevent that community from signing petition to remove the gates to make their traffic get diverted to Palin and Harrigan? There needs to be some sort of safeguard put into place to protect our cul-de-sac from this through traffic and the dangers that it'll bring to Harrigan Road and our cul-de-sac. That's all that I wanted to add, and I think that should be looked into and put into place. Thank you.
Thank you.
A quick answer, I mean, it will be studied, but a quick answer is these are proposed as emergency access, which means that they would only be able to be opened by FireMatic or police agencies. And it will be, it would be a condition normally of the site plan. So if they wanted to open it, they would have to come back to the planning board, and the planning board would have to hold a public hearing to modify the site plan, notify everybody.
And, but at that point, we would be the minorities in the community, because you have...
Well, except...
...units against...
Well, it doesn't go, that's not the determining factor, it would be, there would be another traffic study commissioned, and there would be an analysis and, you know, but it is proposed now, all of those entrances would be for emergency purposes only. We do have several in other communities in the town, Hopewell Glen, I'm not sure about Four Corners, I think they have one, and there are the gates, and the firemen have a key for it.
Yes, but those are a much smaller scale than what's being proposed.
Well, there's 280 units at Hopewell Glen and 240 at Four Corners. So, but there's certainly, I'm not going to, it will be discussed now, and they'll have to address it.
I just want to make sure that there's some sort of...
Absolutely.
...for us.
Absolutely. Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other comments?
Good evening. My name's Mary K. Satriano. Pardon me in advance if I choke through this, I'm not feeling that well. I have submitted to the board an email to keenanjay@eastfishgill.gov. Was that received?
Yes, it was.
It was, okay.
I have it here.
Would you want me to read it, or would you want me to just paraphrase?
I think if you paraphrase it, I think it'd be great. There are a lot of issues here, and many of them will be answered in the process.
Wonderful. So my concerns are the crowded population. I did read the documents of the proposed 23 units with 20 apartments, we're talking 400 some odd, let's just call it an even thousand people, okay? Our village is crowded, is getting more crowded. We don't need another thousand residents. They propose a safety risk to individuals and the public health. As our volunteer fire and EMS service already tested in last meeting, adding more people, even 300 more people, and these are my words, not theirs, is a direct risk to public safety and individual health, is they can't meet these services with the volunteer force as it is. Traffic, I think that has been, that has been brought up. It would destroy our neighborhood. I'm going to use destroy our neighborhood. This project is going to destroy our neighborhood. I live on 9 Mark Lane, I've been there for 45 years. This will destroy our neighborhood. I think that's pretty clear. Quality of life, what's the intangible here? Sight, sound, and comfort. And I'll say it again, three tours in Iraq, I've come home for a nice place to live. Sight, as I look outside my window, some of your windows, I see trees with multiple stories, what, three, four? I get to look at somebody's top of their terraces with their stuff on the back of their houses, the back of their apartments, their rooftops. I get to see that from my kitchen window? That destroys my quality of life, our quality of life. That's not what we moved here for many, many years ago. Do you hear that? That's why we live here, for the silence, for the tranquility, that we can come home at night, at night, and sleep. With this proposed development, you're going to have a thousand people with 900 semi-parking spots, which will require lights 24/7. I don't want to live like that. I don't want to live like that. That destroys our quality of life. Lucky developers, we get nothing. Everything that we have will be destroyed, will be taken away. The daily rhythm of our life board, the weekend where we can walk to our neighbors across the street without having to look both ways, for God forbid what kind of traffic in the future. This man is right to bring up, oh, you promised us now a gate, but what's to say in five, six, 10 years? It means a lot. I appreciate your time, and I understand you have difficult decisions. But this will destroy our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This would probably be a good time, we have received, Mary K., your letter. We've also received a letter from Steve Dittenhofer.
Yes.
And these letters have been passed on to the applicant, and they will be entered into the permanent record in the planning department, and we will be keeping an eye on all of the issues that you brought up as we go through this process.
I appreciate your time, Board, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments?
Good evening. My name is John Fisher. I'm on Harrigan Road. I'm not used to speaking in front of people like this, but I'm going to go on to the same thing about traffic. Leaving on Harrigan Road, I've seen a gentleman, two nights ago, go down that road around 55 miles an hour, up and down, up and down, keep going. It happened about, I'd say, back in 1990. I was on my lawn tractor, and I got hit by a car. It was estimated that the gentleman, young man, was doing about 50, 55 miles an hour on Harrigan. I've seen multiple accidents on Harrigan Road. You put a gate on the back entrance of that development, you're going to wind up with somebody cutting that gate open, one way or another, they're going to open it, because they won't wait to get on 376. I don't think, the accidents that you see on Harrigan, because it's so narrow, you can see people coming at you in the middle of the road, any day or night. And it's a treacherous road, and it's hilly. And it's, the amount of people that are in this town already, as everybody here attests to, is not right. It's not right. There's other places outside of the community area that can be developed. And I don't think, I don't think we should, we should go on with this situation. I thank you for your time, and I hope there can be resolutions to this issue.
Thank you. Other comments? Anyone?
Hi, my name is Regina Gentile. I'm 15, Steven Drive. I've been a resident in that neighborhood for 16 years, raising my three kids there. It is a wonderful neighborhood. People, the community, the people, we all look out for each other. I'm not really, I don't have anything written yet, I will prepare something, but some of the things that I've listened to in the previous meeting and tonight, I just wanted to reinforce. The traffic is really bad on Harrigan, and I know that there's proposed gates, but if somebody that does open up... somebody that does open, I just want to explain, my property goes, my back of my yard touches Harrigan. Harrigan is an atrocious road. Two people have come off the road into the back of my, between my property and the lady on the corner. They didn't get hurt, but they go off the road because it's a curvy road that cannot handle any more traffic that's already on it. So I'm not going to go into any more about the traffic, but it's always a concern. I have a brand-new driver, I'm constantly lecturing her about the dangers of Harrigan Road. One of the things that came up in the meeting that really concerns me last time was the fire gentleman over here talked about the fact that our EMS is already spread thin. If anybody has ever had any health concerns, or has a kid that might get hurt, that the EMS cannot respond quick enough to get to your family member, that is a scary thing, and I've actually witnessed that myself in a, in a previous place where I've lived. It's not something that anybody would want to cross, and if somebody's life is in danger because we don't have enough EMS, already strapped EMS service, then that's a really scary situation. Another thing that's never come up, and that should be concerning, is a big environmental impact, is the animals that are going to be displaced. I've hiked behind there, in that section, there's a lot of wildlife. They have to go somewhere. Where are they going to go? Now they're going to be in everybody's backyards. There's deer, there's bear, there's coyote, many other animals. Nobody's, lots of turkey.
Don't forget the turkey.
Yeah, tons of turkey. They have to go somewhere, they need to live too. Where are they supposed to go? So these are just a few of my concerns, as well as others, but these are the only ones I've prepared for tonight. We are concerned, it would, I think it would be an atrocious thing to happen to our neighborhood, that all of a sudden that we have to deal with all this noise, light pollution, our civil liberties strapped, like fire, EMS, it's very concerning, and I certainly wouldn't want somebody to get hurt because they can't get emergency services quick enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Mike Janasek. I've been up in Steven Drive, I'm probably one of the older ones here, been there probably for about 35, 38 years or so. Got nothing prepared, but I'm not going to go and rehash everything that you've heard already. As a matter of fact, I realize that towns need to grow to survive. It's just a fact. However, it can be done in a logical way. Putting a development like this in the middle of the town, someone needs to explain to me what the logic is. I just don't understand. My question to the board is, I'm not sure how these things work. You have a development that's just been approved over in Stormville. I believe it's going to be about 200 and some odd units, if not mistaken. So when you look at the traffic impact and the impact on schools and everything else for that development, is everything done in the silo? Or is all this looked at together to see what the overall impact's going to be for the entire community? Can the community absorb this much, this quickly, right now, without having a plan for growth in the future? Fire departments, police, schools, we've heard that multiple times as well. I would just ask the board, again, not knowing how this works, that all this is looked at in one big bubble, rather than looking at everything separate, and what the impact on the community is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please sign in?
Yes, sorry.
And I can assure you, that's all part of this process, that the applicant will actually be taking all of that into account, all the projects that, that are on the docket, that are about to be developed. It will all be brought together, so stay tuned.
Bet.
Bet. Anything else? So the applicant has agreed to permit us to extend the period to receive written comments until December 31st. So if there's anything that you or your neighbors or anyone else would like to share with us, please feel free to send it in as a letter or an email, and just make sure it comes in before December 31st. That will then be taken into account by the applicant, and they will be preparing a document that we will consider in our January meeting. Were there any other comments from you?
No, not tonight, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions from the board or staff. We thank you again for listening to us and the public, and we look forward to continuing this process.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chairman, I just point out that Town Board has prepared a letter of comments, which will be submitted Thursday as part of the comment period.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. So with that, I'll accept a motion to close the public scoping session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is actually going to be tabled. The Phillips Road thing will be held over until our next meeting.
See you tomorrow.
So the item on that, after that, is Stone Castle. Stone Castle is a public hearing. I'll wait for a moment.
Don't forget. Do I have to quiet? Did he see it?
Is the applicant for Stone Castle available?
I thought he, he might be out in the vestibule. Isn't it the, the older gentleman with the other guy?
Yeah.
I think they're sitting out in the vestibule.
Do you mind just asking if Stone Castle, tell them that...
I thought I saw them.
Great. Thank you. Okay. While you're getting set up, I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing for Stone Castle.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're looking at site plan approval for an 8,000-square-foot, two-story contractor's warehouse on 2.09-acre lot in the I-3 district. Okay. Perhaps you could give us any updates and let us know if anything has changed since the last time you were before the board?
Actually, nothing has changed. I think the only thing that has changed is I think George Brandt had correspondence with Mr. Williams from the Highway Department on a review. I know originally I talked to Jeanie and asked Scott to take a look at the, the site as far as the visual visualization, you know, traffic in and out, and I think we have a positive response, that there's no problem in that respect. So having said that, it's my understanding that we have completed all of the comments and addressed all the comments from the town engineer. The applicant has given Jackie all of the return requested cards for the public hearing, so with that, I'll listen to anyone that may have any comments, but for the most part, we're here looking for final approval. Thank you.
So I'll start with the board. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from our professionals?
I have a question.
Yes.
Did you do any excavation, do you have any idea about the amounts of fill or excavating that you'll have to do on and off the site? I just want to make sure that you're not going to need a special permit for that. Do you have any idea of the amounts?
I don't anticipate an amount of fill or cut or fill material being brought in.
Okay. Anything over 375 cubic yards requires a special permit, so if it's going to be more than that, you'll have to...
If that's the case, I will get a permit.
So right now...
It's processed through this board.
Usually it's processed through here, so right now, the resolution reads, resolution of site plan approval and special permit, it doesn't look like they're seeking that special permit right now. I added a condition at the end, no more than 375 cubic yards of non-exempt material on the resolution, so if it's more than that, he's going to have to come back.
The applicant has just told me that the contractor has calculated 240 yards.
Perfect, okay, great.
Excellent. The record.
So get rid of special...
Is that import or export?
It's a net export. The building is built on slab, so there's really not a lot of material coming out. It's mostly extra topsoil and some fill.
Okay. Anything else from our professionals? If not, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public that have comments regarding the project? There being none, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we do have a negative declaration and a resolution of approval that I will go ahead and read, and we'll take that action this evening. The negative declaration, name of the action is Stone Castle, it's an unlisted action. The street address is Sprout Creek Court, and environmental issues that were identified as irrelevant included land use and zoning, visual character, historic and archaeological resources, plants and animals, traffic and transportation, and other. And, I'm summarizing here, that no potential impacts were identified as a result of the proposed action, and therefore I will accept a motion to approve this negative declaration.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution of site plan approval and special permit, name of site plan, Stone Castle, name of applicant, Stone Castle Suffering LLC, location, Sprout Creek Court, whereas the applicant is applying for site plan approval for a distribution warehouse located in an I-3 zone, whereas the proposed distribution warehouse would be located on 2.09-acre parcel and would contain an 8,000-square-foot, two-story building and 10 parking spaces, including one handicap space, whereas no processing materials or fuel storage is permitted on the site, whereas the public hearing for the site plan was open and closed on December 17th, 2024, whereas the proposed project is an unlisted action under SEACR and a coordinated review is undertaken, whereas a negative declaration was adopted on December 17th, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan, Stone Castle, as represented on a map entitled Stone Castle Prepared by Charles P. May and Associates PC, dated 4/2/24 and last revised 9/12/24. Be it further resolved that within five business days or the adoption of this resolution, the chair or the duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall be required to fund an escrow account for an environmental monitor during construction. Number two, approval of the Dutchess County Health Department. Number three, applicant shall obtain a highway work permit from the town highway department for the driveway. Number four, no more than 375 cubic yards of non-exempt material should be removed or brought onto the site. Number five, satisfactory resolution of all comments in the Renia Engineering Comment Letter dated 11/19/24.
John, I just want to say one thing. There are wetlands at the rear of the parcel. Sometimes the planning board desires to put some sort of, you know, demarcation along the buffer, sometimes they don't, depending on the site, but there is wetlands and then a 100-foot wetland adjacent area. They're not disturbing any of that as part of their project, but it is relatively close to the, the back of their building. I think the back of the building, there's no parking, you can't, you won't be able to drive back there or anything like that, so it's, it's up to the board about whether or not they want to have any demarcation there or not.
But you could walk back there.
You can walk back there, but you can't probably get a car back there.
Okay.
Okay.
Split rail fence type demarcation.
You know, a lot of times, I think, as was just pointed out, a lot of times we have a split rail fence that provides that demarcation. Had you planned any, anything to demarcate the difference between the regular site versus the wetlands?
We have intended to do that, it was never brought up, but the applicant is here.
Or boulders.
Sometimes...
Boulders.
Yeah, boulders are used, larger boulders.
Probably do boulders.
We can put it as a condition that it just has to be added to the...
I would suggest maybe just do some snowplow markers and then a couple of signs, like that. I don't know if they're going to generate boulders and then for them to go get boulders, I think it's easier just to... So can, can we maybe set something up that is subject to some demarcation that is, is presented to the town engineer and accepted by the town engineer?
Yes.
As condition number six. Okay. This resolution was offered by planning board member John Eichman. May I have a second?
So moved. Sorry.
So we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G., Ed Miyoshi, Sarah Bledsoe, Richard Campbell, John Gianagnoli, and John Eichman, I'm an aye, it carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is landmark unions. As a matter of housekeeping, we do need to declare lead agency. Could I have a motion to declare lead agency for this application?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Andy Delvecchio, a member of the firm Abidi Pettivano, on behalf of the applicant Core Mark Hopewell LLC. As an update, as you know, we were here previously, and we have now visited the Architectural Review Board. The building itself has undergone a bit of a metamorphosis. It has a full two-story look, it's hardy plank and brick, and we had, you know, fairly significant discussions with the ARC Board, and ultimately received their approval on the redesign of the project at their last meeting. There were several comments that were in the initial letter, review letters that we received. I think primarily they concerned the fire department or the fire board comments. We had hired and retained our fire consultant, who went up and met with the fire board at their last meeting, and I believe have resolved the fire issues that were raised in that letter. We have one additional amendment to make to our plan to reflect that conversation, which we will, of course, do as we revise the plan moving forward. The other issue I will generally call traffic-related, and that concerned a request in one of your professional reports that we anticipate or provide for the potential future access from the property, I'm going to call it to our east, to be able to transfer vehicles into our site and eventually into a further traffic improvement that Hopewell is envisioning down the road. We have... We have done that, and we received, I think it was today's review letter or comment, we received a comment that indicated perhaps a, an alternate connection point should be considered, and the only reason I bring it up is if we do go to that alternate, it's going to raise our impervious coverage, which is going to trigger a variance that will send us to the zoning board. We're going there anyway because we have signage variances, as are noted in the latest review letter, but this will add to it if that is the preferred method. So that is an update of what we've been doing since we've last seen you. One of the items we needed was for you to declare lead agency, and thank you for doing that. That accomplished part one of my list tonight. Part two is a referral to the zoning board so we can present the variances that are going to be necessary for the project.
Okay. Could I have a motion to refer the applicant to the zoning board of appeals?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have representation of what the building now looks like that you can put up on...
Yes.
On the computer? I'm not sure if all board members have had a chance to see that. And then did you mention too that there were some comments by our architectural review group on that design that you were...
Not on the last design.
Okay.
I think we were, I think we sat down for about 17 seconds when we reappeared the second time before we were told we hit the mark with what they had wanted, so we didn't receive any comments after this last plan, but that...
Great.
...plan represents the new design of the building.
Excellent. So the south elevation is what you'd see on the main road as you're driving down?
Right, that runs parallel to the road.
Okay.
That south elevation is the parallel elevation to the road. The east elevation is our main entrance.
Okay.
And obviously the north then becomes the rear elevation. That west elevation has the drive-up ATM, as you can see, with the overhang that's created in a more traditional architectural fashion than the awning that we had extended out or cantilevered out off the building originally.
Other questions or comments from board members?
The area on the roof line where the dormers are, is that office space? Is that storage space?
It's...
Dead space?
Dead space.
So that's strictly structure showing?
For appearances.
Just appearance only?
It's meant to create the look that was desired without creating the, you know, the floor space.
I know there were some questions about numbers of parking spaces or location thereof. Have we satisfied those items? Michelle, do you know?
I think the one thing that we noted when we were looking at it was that the escape lane was only nine feet. I don't know if Brendan had a chance to look at that or not, that...
I think we revised the 12 on the current.
Was it?
It's 12 and 12. I guess that, is that then we can confirm?
What was the question? I'm sorry.
The escape lane.
Yeah, they're both 12 feet. Both lands are 12 feet, and that's per the code section in...
Yeah, that's why we were concerned when we saw the nine. Okay, and then I just have a question about the variances. You're saying that if they, if you move it to where I think, I believe you had suggested, right?
I think what they're saying is if they add any more impervious, they're going to go over the threshold.
It's lot coverage variance is what you're going to need?
Right.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're clear what we're referring them to the zoning board for, and if that's something that you would choose to refer them to the zoning board for lot coverage so that they could make the connection where it's being suggested by Brendan. And then I believe it's also for signage, because you're going to have more signage than is typically allowed, which is normal with banks, I'm going to be honest. And then there, I think there was one other variance that was needed.
It's not noted in the review letter we were handed this evening, but there is a buffer slash location of parking stall variance primarily along the side lot line with neighboring property to the east and to the front property line. Some of the spaces are closer than prescribed.
So perhaps we should expand and amend our motion to refer you to the ZBA to include referral for lot coverage, signage, and location of parking stalls.
And that's assuming you guys are happy with the recommendation that they're proposing, where they're proposing to connect.
Well, I think, I don't think we're there yet, so I think that's a little bit of, I mean, I think we have to work on, I mean, I did get the plan this afternoon that was able to take a quick look at, and I think the way I would look at this a little bit differently would be, I don't see the need to modify the existing circulation that you have. I think that that row of parking in the back, those four spots, can just be rotated to be along the back property line. I'm assuming they're probably going to end up being employee parking spaces anyway back there, and then I think you have enough room to put the, you know, the potential future access to be aligned with the, you know, to where the access is into the adjoining property. If that makes sense to you.
I'm not sure I follow, but...
So I guess, well, maybe let's just take one step back. So if you, so there was a comment about, you know, exploring the potential of crosesment to have access into the pizza property. They did show a 24-foot access, it's just that where they show it, it ends up, you know, not aligned with the rear aisle. It just aligns with a row of parking, so it's going to make maneuverability difficult, you know, within the adjoining lot for Village Pizza. So it makes, it would make a lot more sense if that access was going to be provided, you know, right where the access point connects to the road system that's there. Again, we can't predict the future. We don't know how this all is going to shake out. I mean, the, you know, the town's conceptual plan for this area is to have a circulating road around the back of these properties, so, you know, connecting these to that road, you know, that potential is good also. But what they modified in what the plan they showed me today is they modified the access and pushed it, pushed a couple of spaces back and made the circulation a little bit tighter, and I don't think that that's necessary. I think you could just leave the circulation the way that they have it on the original plan, and those four parking spaces, just rotate them out to be parallel with the rear property line. Then I think you have enough room for everything. I can't tell you for certain, but it looks like, when I look at the scale of stuff, it looks like it would fit in that way.
So do I understand then that that then would not require any variance for lot coverage?
I don't know where they are with that. I mean, I don't know if they're, you know, at 99.9% or with the lot coverage.
We're already over.
Oh, you're already...
Pre-existing non-conformity, so anything that we add is going to exasperate.
So you're already getting that variance?
You're already going for a lot coverage variance.
Existing is 78.7. We're going to 77.7. We're actually bringing it down a hair before the wild card of the connection came up. So we have very little to play with before we jump from dropping it, making it better to making it slightly worse.
Hey Brendan, as you're talking about rotating those spots, the, it looks like the trash is also there. I don't think you can rotate that.
Push it back to the rear. It could be pushed straight back. As he shows it on this alignment, it probably could be right where it is.
And if you rotated the spots, then how would you get in, I guess I'm maybe just not seeing...
I think he's saying go in parallel.
When you say rotate the spots, which direction are you talking about rotating them?
To the angle of rear property line.
Right.
So you would just come in, pull into the spot, back out, go out the...
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just not sure you have enough depth of parking space and then enough width of aisle for the back-out maneuver if you rotate them the way you're speaking. We'll have to take a look. I'm eyeballing it and trying to envision as you're describing, and I'm wondering whether there's enough backup space between the, you know, the...
So you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have the two spots lower, so you'd be able, you do have a lot of room there, I just...
I mean, I drew it on here with my marker, but you, I mean, if you didn't have the red there, you have, you're basically backing into the access line.
If it works, it works. I'm just, you know, I'm doing it by eyeball, so...
I mean, I guess, you know, I don't, I don't want the, you know, this potential crosesment just to be there for show, right? I mean, if, we should try to put it in a place that's going to make some logical sense.
No, I agree with the connection location aligning to the travelway on the adjoining property. That makes sense to me. I just wanted to make sure I understood where you were talking about the spots.
Yeah, so I'm just saying like, you know, this doesn't need to be here. Like keep the circulation exactly the way it is. There's, there's the outer part of the circulation. Circulation stays the same, take these four parking spots, just rotate them against the back.
Michelle, what are the red lines on the map?
Unless there was starting the red and the blue.
I can't read it from here.
Well, I can tell you the red line is what your consultant is proposing. The blue line is what we initially had proposed.
Right, you're going to back into this...
So when Brendan asked me about moving these parking spaces back, can he go all the way to the property line or does it have to stand?
That's what he's saying. He wants them back in there.
I thought he was having to stick with the red line.
So perhaps we could ask the applicant to work closely with our traffic engineer to kind of work out the details on this, and we will see this again at another meeting. In the meantime, is there any reason why we can't include in the referral lot coverage if and as necessary?
That can be included, because also even under the New York State town law, it's just based on whatever sort of denial letter they receive from the building department. That'll be what the variances are.
Gotcha.
And there's no ZBA meeting in December anyway, so their next time before the ZBA would be in January.
Gotcha. So, so could I have, I think you made the motion recently, would you accept that amendment and further modification of it?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I just had one other question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to check with fire advisory that, that overhang, we talked about this on the last meeting, that the drive-through overhang is, seems to me that it's out far enough that it would impede passage of fire apparatus?
Their fire safety consultant met with the fire advisory board this month, and he made a proposal that the driveway stay as it is, but on the, to the left, those, that grass area is actually put in with the pavers that the grass goes up through, that's still a solid drivable surface, and bringing that all the way out to the front end of the, of the building. And that way, because if you look at the turning radius that they provided, it just clipped the corner of the, of the overhang.
Yeah.
And the other thing I wanted to bring up, whenever it's decided, whatever's decided, if it's any different than what they previously showed us, they're going to need to provide us with a new turning radius map for whatever roads are there, if it's changed, using the correct turning radius for the present apparatus, which I gave to your fire safety consultant. So...
And would, you're saying that that would, that would be able to be, the apparatus would be able to be supported by the pavers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it'd be, it'd be great if they just brought the road straight down instead of bringing it back in towards the building, but having that type of surface there is satisfactory.
Passable. Okay, okay.
Well, the only question is, it would have to be maintained in the wintertime though, so...
That was agreed to as well, I believe, during the meeting.
Yep.
They'll keep it clean in the winter, okay.
Yeah, there was a certain cleaning by end of, I think it was four hours end of storm, if I remember Jerry's comment, or by end of storm, something like that. We have a memo, and we were prepared to abide by it.
Was the purpose of making it the pavers to stay below the threshold of impervious surface?
No, I mean, the fire consultant didn't, didn't ask us. It was his idea, I mean, and...
Seems like it's there to try to widen that length so they don't...
Right, but is that, is that included in the impervious surface or not?
It's not, no.
Right. I mean, I'm just wondering if that's the reason it was done, because then there could be some option, like that parking in the rear could potentially be employee parking, and you could make the parking surface out of that same product if you want, if that gets you out of having to have more impervious. Because if you included that area as impervious, it would be...
But it's the disturbance that's the trigger, right? Now whether it's impervious or not at the end.
I think they're saying it's over in the coverage.
Oh, the lot coverage, okay.
I mean, the ideal solution is to continue the driveway along the, closer to the edge of the property line, but, you know, they're trying to save some green space there, and it wouldn't have to be that much. I mean, it was so close to being able to make that turn without, without hitting the overhang for the ATM and the drive-up that we didn't need much. What he proposed is actually bring it all the way down to the, to the front edge of the building, which, that's, that's even better, but if they just extended that driveway along the property line a little further down, that would do the same thing. You'd just lose a little more green space on that side.
Yeah, there's a fair amount of landscaping in that area that we were trying to preserve.
Dave, do fire trucks, do you plan on fire trucks getting a lot bigger over time? Like, are we planning for fire trucks that we have now that are going to be obsolete in 10 years?
No, one of the things that's limited is the doors on our firehouse.
Those aren't changing. Got it. Okay.
Okay.
Touche.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, if we go back to the elevations, I saw obviously the front door, where's, where's the additional access in that building? Is there another door in there somewhere?
There's a door in the back.
Oh, in the back, okay, all right. And then are you, you're not using any kind of like safety glass, shatterproof glass, golf course glass, anything like that in the windows, doors?
I am not familiar with...
First four feet is tempered.
Okay.
Think about that, just...
Okay, but it's not break-proof or anything like that, or...
Not really.
Okay, all right.
Firemen like to break glass, so...
Other questions or comments? So Michael, what, this will be another one of our coordinated...
It will be, yes. It's a coordinated review under the state environmental quality review.
Okay, and so we'll, we'll wait for that action to begin, commence before we take further action at this time?
Yeah, and we have to still, they're just going to be circulating now, so we'll have to declare lead agency at the next meeting, and there's a few steps.
Okay. All right. There's nothing further. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jason Littrick from JL Architecture, representing Revel for the planning board meeting. So I think we addressed the majority of the comments that were made. A few of the ones that we received tonight, I'd like to kind of go over, and I wanted to apologize to the fire advisory board, because I don't remember receiving the comments from the last time about the Knox box and stuff. We would have addressed it for you. And with those comments, one of them is to have the structure fitted with a smoke detector, CO alarm connected with monitors. Is that just a note that we can put on the drawings? Because that typically would be handled with, during the planning, the building department process during construction. So a simple note on the plan is just to provide that would be good. We'll also provide a Knox box on the exterior with the keys. We'll have a note there to, location to be coordinated with the fire department. We'll locate the trash, trash receptacle 35 feet from the structure, rather than trying to construct a fire-rated structure for it. And the last comment for the warehouse portion of the building, we're now using the entire first floor as part of the retail space for the, for the convenience store. So I think that kind of addresses the four comments that we had, and again, I apologize if we missed it last time. As for the other comments that we received, we will get our engineer to do the water and septic analysis for you. We, it is, we're keeping the apartment above exactly the same as it was. The use before was also a retail space with a warehouse, so we're, it's kind of, it's a change of occupancy, but it's really a change of occupant. There, no change in, I mean, retail's retail, but we'll get those numbers, you know, what it was before and what we're proposing. was before and what we're proposing now.
Can I just ask quickly, are they going to like, for instance, sell coffee or no?
I'm sorry?
Coffee.
Coffee?
No, in their, their narrative, they said no food.
Not even coffee?
Yeah, no, no cooking, no nothing like that.
No coffee? Okay.
Just, yeah, probably coffee, but no baking, no, no sandwich making or?
I'm asking, will there be coffee sold?
Will there be coffee?
Yes.
Yes.
Coffee. Because that's a water demand that is different and apart from what the lawnmower shop had. That's why I asked that question.
Gotcha.
And, and the health department may look at that to make, to trigger a public water supply because you're serving people. So just keep your eye.
Remove the lock.
I mean, you can have it. We're just telling you that.
But it's going to open up another level of requirement.
So we'll, we'll get those analyses addressed to you. The others seem like they were all, the, the outstanding item is the garage. So from what I'm, from my understanding, the garage is currently being used for storage and being rented out to the adjacent neighbor.
Negative.
No?
No. It's not being rented out to Mamma Mia's.
So?
No, it's not for the pizza guy. No, it's a, it's a bread guy.
It's a, it's a bread guy?
Yes.
So?
It's by the.
But it's being used for storage?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what we, we did note down in the plans, that it was for storage and we included that as part of the parking count. The other comment about the concrete pad, I just spoke with the owners, they will remove the fence. So that way it's not an eyesore. They're no longer going to have a propane tank there. The concrete slab will remain and they'll take the chain link fence down. The lighting plans, we did have, I was looking at the lighting plan, the height is 18 feet. It's on the actual fixtures where they're located on the site plan. See if I can, this guy's a little tricky, huh? Bear with me one second. So at the actual light pole, we'll bring it more to your attention, but where we have the actual new proposed lights, it does state that they're at 18 feet. And that's for all, all four new light fixtures. The, we'll adjust the foot candles to show them going into the parking areas and/or to the grass areas rather than stopping them at the edge of pavement. We'll show where they extend to.
And where they hit zero because we're looking to see that you're not putting light over the property line. Either bring them as, to the property line or bring them to zero. You can, if they turn into several zeros to, there's no.
You stop it right there.
You can stop it at the zeros, but what we want to see is where that boundary of the zeros are. So we know that there's not light spilling over.
Yeah, we could, that's easy enough just to expand the, the parameters of the, the foot candles. So we can show that on the revised lighting plan. That's not an issue. And I would say that the, the lights that I think we're proposing are on a.
What about unloading area? Unloading area, they have unloading area?
They were going to be on a photo cell. So that way it's dusk to dawn. They turn on automatically and they'll turn off when the, when the sun comes up. And I think that's everything. The last item is the landscaping. Kind of going through the neighborhood, we noticed that we don't have a lot of areas to propose landscaping for in front of the store. So we're proposing planters to kind of wrap around the front of the store and to give it a nice, nice appearance. Let me just zoom out of here. I think it's down here. Looking at planters similar to, or mouse would be nicer, but just little planters that we can line the sidewalk in front of the store. It also acts as a buffer between the sidewalk and the parking. And this way they can plant, you know, mostly be annuals and probably not perennials. But the rest of the property is in the DOT zone where the sidewalk is and it's not really ideal for planting any kind of landscaping up there. But we're hoping that, we've noticed that other stores along 376 have done planters as well. So we're hoping that would be, you know, enough to satisfy the landscaping requirements. I think that's all I have.
I think there, there are a number of encroachments that show up on your plan. Is that something that you are going to deal with as a part of this process?
What do you?
Encroachments either way. There are some, I, I don't have the plan in front of me, but if I recall correctly, I think there's some bollards on the side of the, the site with Mamma Mia, perhaps?
Container. There's also a container, I believe, and it looks like maybe some encroachments from the existing.
Yeah, they have, their, their well cap is, is encroaching onto their property. And yeah, there's some, some kind of bollards along the gravel parking way. That's on their property as well.
And in the rear corner, there's some structures. I don't know if those belong to the property owner or if they belong to the adjacent property owner.
It would be an opportune time, I think, to see if you could start to deal with those things so you end up.
Yeah, I'm not sure who the storage container and the portable carport. The portable carport, that is, that's not yours?
Portable carport, no.
What about the storage container? Is that yours back there?
No, it's by the, by the pizza place.
It's in the, way in the back.
No, it's not. People, people will have to wait until they remember that two days ago.
Questions or comments by board members?
I've got a few com, few things.
I thought you might.
So right now, there's an existing three-bedroom apartment in the building, which was pre-existing. I don't believe there was any approvals for that apartment and, ever. So basically now that we've reopened the site plan, we need to get that apartment approved. You're currently in a B3 zone, which allows for mixed use. However, it limits the number of bedrooms that can be in an apartment to two. So, and then the other option is that you could get a, technically you could go for a caretaker's apartment, but again, it limits your option to, to two bedrooms. So at this point, I think the, your only recourse would be to go get some sort of maybe an area variance for an additional bedroom. It wouldn't be a use variance, it'd be an area variance. So that's, that's one thing. However, as part of the B3 zone, it also includes language about facade improvements and fixing up the appearance of the building. And so in order to get that apartment, there's that requirement. Okay. And then we, so we would need to, and if that were to happen, we'd need to see some elevations and we would need to refer you to the architectural review council.
Okay. So we did submit to the ZBA, but we submitted as a use variance for the apartment. And I think we'd much rather go the route of, through the planning board and make it a two-bedroom apartment rather than a three-bedroom and have it as, because it's going to be a caretaker's living quarters.
Okay. So you would still need to meet all the requirements of the B3 zone for the residential use, okay? Because it's a mixed-use residential district and there are some specific use regulations that go along with that for the B3, including the facade improvements. And then, right now, you're not, you're just showing it as a garage, but it's being used as storage. But it sounds like there's, you're getting deliveries to and from that. So that garage, I think, needs to be listed as storage on the site plan if it's being used as storage. It's going to use, it's not being used as a garage. It's being used for a business.
I agree.
I, I heard you say you're going to remove the fence. Did you also say you're removing the gazebo? Because I believe that was another structure that was.
The, that would be a call for.
Do we need to remove gazebo? It looks like.
I think the gazebo is, is that, it's not in conformance, right?
Or, or repaired, fixed up, as you said, part of the B3.
Okay, so it's not that it's, it's, it's not that it's too many accessory structures, it's just that it's in, in a dilapidated condition?
Correct.
Okay. So that has to either be fixed up or removed?
Yeah.
There's, just because you're in close proximity to the school, I just want to make sure you're aware that there's a rule that you can't sell any tobacco products in your store. Were you planning on selling any tobacco products?
Just cigarettes.
Yeah, that.
Just the cigarettes.
I don't think cigarettes are even allowed, right?
That, that would be included in tobacco probation.
Yeah.
Because there's a certain geographical requirement. So you, you and your design professional, take a look at the code on that one.
Are you, and then are you proposing any new signs or signage? Because if there is anything that's going to be actually physically located on, that's not on the building, but on the actual site, it needs to be shown on the site plan. Okay. Handicap parking must be striped and signed. And I don't think that's it. And I was just going to refer to you if you had any comments.
Is there any way you can put that site plan back on the screen, just for reference?
Yeah. the loading zone.
Could you just explain like the way access is to the site and anticipate it?
Yeah, so right now, the way we understood the comment from before, that you wanted to, you were proposing to make one of those entrances ingress and one way in and one way out along 376. That's how we interpreted the comment. And the one on the left that goes on to that Lake Walton Road would remain an in and out.
What's the rationale for having the, I mean, I would, I mean, the rationale putting the out on that side and not the other? Just the idea of keeping the, you know, keeping it as far from the intersection as possible. So you can, you know.
There are existing curb cuts that were there?
I know. And I, and I guess that was part of the other question too, is, is, I mean, have you gone back to the DOT at all to, to look at how we?
We're trying. We were hoping that we could avoid any kind of firm 33 to deal with DOT and because we have the existing curb cuts that are there. We're just kind of doing a redevelopment of the, of the site.
I think my, my comment relates to that, like the original site, I mean, DOT recently did a project here and there was a different use there. And they left that configuration for that particular use, whatever the argument was made. But it isn't, I mean, it isn't access that DOT would normally grant. So, you know, now that the use is changing, normally they wouldn't allow, you know, three, three entrances into a property and certainly not two in close proximity on the state highway unless they were directional potentially. And since they're already there, they, they might be willing to let them stay. But if you put, I mean, if you make them directional, the only way to make them directional is to actually sign them. You're going to have to put the signs in the right of way. You're going to have to go to DOT.
DOT.
So, I mean, there is, you know, you can do as much as you want to try to avoid it, but again, I think it would be better if the, you know, if, if the, the exit was further from the intersection. Because again, you're trying to, you know, that intersection is awful, awful busy in the peak hours. If you're trying to exit onto, you know, onto 376 closer to the intersection, you're going to have a much harder time getting in the traffic than you would if it was a little bit further back. And, you know, it's, but that's, and then, and then the other thing would be about a location for deliveries.
Yeah, I think, you know, quite honestly, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think that's going to add an incredible expense to their development if they have to get into relocating entry points that we already have that have been there for. Could they be just chained off like with a fire, fire department key or something for emergency access? Just chain them off?
If you want to close one.
If they want to close one.
Yeah. And I don't know, like I said, I don't know the suitability of the one for this to the east. Is that, is that wide enough to be two, two directional?
No, they're both about wide enough to be one-way. They don't, they don't meet the 24-foot.
Well, I mean, my experience with the DOT is that they're not, you know, they're, they're not, you know, completely unreasonable in the aspect of, you know, they're going to look at what's there. And, you know, if there's, if there's an easy opportunity for an improvement, they're, they're going to ask for it. Or if you have a strong argument for why it needs to stay this way, then, you know, that would go a long ways through. Certainly, we, you know, you wouldn't want two cars exiting at the same time, driveways that are so close and into heavy stream of traffic. So I mean, it would make sense. I mean, I don't know how you avoid, I mean, even if you left the curb cuts exactly where they are and you made them directional, you're going to have to go to the DOT. You're going to have to put signs.
Yeah.
Right away.
But I, I think it's worth asking if we can maintain the existing. Because again, I think it's going to add a huge economic, financial burden to start changing the sidewalks, the curb cuts. You know, they purchased the building to kind of use it. It was retail. They wanted to use it as retail. We're here because it's a change of use and they're trying to use the site as, you know, they're trying to make improvements, but I think that's a pretty extreme.
Well, I thought, I mean, I think the suggestion that I made was that, you know, the act, the curb cuts stay the way they are, that you just make them directional.
So that's, that's, so.
So I think adding a few signs, I don't know if that's, you know, a huge burden.
So just kind of run what we have past DOT and make sure they're, they give their blessing on it.
Right, but I think you need to add signs. Like right now, you're showing arrows.
We have, well, we do have do not enter signs and we have one-way signs.
Okay. But aren't they, aren't those located in the DOT right of way?
We have them just inside of our property line. So they're, let me see if I can zoom We're keeping them just in, just on the property line. Because we have a side, there's a sidewalk that passes through. So we can't put them, and if we put them out, then they're going to be right on 376.
So you're, you're just proposing one do not enter sign and a one-way sign on one side?
Yeah, so we have the, we have the do not enter facing 376. And then on the other side, we have it facing a do not enter that's facing the property. So they don't go on to, they don't exit out of that curb cut.
What's to become of the entrance on Lake Walton Road, the third one? Is that one staying in and out?
That's staying in and out.
So there, during the really busy time, like when schools getting out and getting in, people cut through there to avoid the light because the light gets really backed up. So people just cut right through that parking lot and straight out the other side.
Is that because it's also an abandoned property?
I mean, it hasn't always been abandoned. So no, I don't, I don't think so.
We could put a sign that says no, no through traffic.
So Brendan, do you think, is this something that if the applicant were to get in touch with you?
I think at a minimum, I would, I think you should consider switching the driveways, you know, to the, to the operation of switching the in and the out on 376.
On the other, switch the other ones.
Yes. And then I just, can you just zoom out again? I mean, is there a, the anticipated area where you're going to be able to have delivery vehicles, you know, stop and, and not disrupt the rest of the traffic in the site?
Delivery vehicles normally is about, you know, small kind of, we don't get that very much.
Makes sense. Right, but you would get, you would get pretty large single unit trucks, whatever they are, right? The guy who's delivering the soda or potato chips. But I, I mean, where do you, I guess I'm just saying like, again, it's your site. So, I mean, I think after you had deliveries, you're going to get used to where they're going to go and stage. So I just wondering if there's a place on the site plan where you could identify.
This is sort of like the loading zone?
Yeah, or, you know.
So it doesn't conflict with the entrance or exit while being unloaded?
Yeah, so, I mean, we could, we could technically call this long, we could, we could put the loading zone in this long driveway. in this long driveway that we have here. Because that's, you know, it only goes to that storage garage. We could use that for the loading zone.
Is that driveway full motion to the east?
That one's not full motion now.
Okay, other comments, questions? So, so do I understand then that you are looking to convert the apartment to a two-bedroom apartment? And that that would not then require any action by the ZBA?
That's correct. That's correct, yeah.
So we don't, you don't need a referral to the ZBA at this point?
Yeah, we did submit an app, from, based on the last time we were here, we did submit an application to the ZBA for use variance. But we can withdraw that and I'd rather continue with the planning board process.
Okay. But then you do, do need to take a look at your elevations and improvements to the exterior of the building as well as many other items.
Yes.
Got it. Any other thing that we can?
Sorry, did we declare lead agency?
We did not. So is it declare intent or declare lead agency?
Declare intent.
Okay, got it. May I have a motion to declare intent to be lead agency?
So moved. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, I think that completes it. Anything else on your side that we need to go over?
No, I think we'll just, we'll address the comments that we have. We'll change the floor plans to a two-bedroom. We'll look at the exterior of the building and we'll resubmit and see if I back at the next meeting.
Great.
And then you'll just, with your circulation, you'll be completing the circulation, just coordinate with Jackie. Coordinate with Jackie on the secret circulation, okay? And she can give you, we have some standardized forms that we use that can help you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Stormville Square.
I think you guys can see that. Brian, Stokosa, Dan, Stokosa Engineering. We were here, I think, two months ago, giving a semi-updated plan. We were seeking permission to put a retaining wall in the back of this property. The site plan had a couple of approvals. We're back for, I believe, our third time. I think we got it this time. The last time we were here, we had a two-story climate-controlled building with some site improvements. An applicant, some financial concerns on building construction, decided to kind of rework the site and see what worked economically from a building standpoint. So we revised the building from a two-story, $36,000 to a one-story, $21,000 square foot building. Originally, we were a climate-controlled storage. Now we've converted this to retail office and have a small restaurant within the site. So we configured the building in a U shape. So in the center portion of the U would be a patio area, outdoor area. And then we would have access from the inside of the U to various different suites. It's one story. Access is flat all around the building. So fire access throughout the building going around the site. There would be rear doors on the side and forth north and south and to the east of the building for access. We've configured parking toward the north of the building and between the two existing, between the existing building and the proposed building. And then we provided some parking in the rear. The thought process was if there was like a restaurant entity there, that employee parking could be focused toward the back to open up the front to more of your patron parking. And focus it, again, more toward the front of the site. Access around the site will be one way. So as you come up the central corridor, it'll split and you can go around the building. We show 15, I believe 15-foot or 16-foot drive aisles for the one-way access. We show some handicap parking to the south, but looking at the town engineer's comments, we'll probably switch and add a couple more handicap parking spots in the northern part to access the northern part of the building. Refuge container is toward the rear of the site. And we do show a loading area toward the rear of the building toward the north. The retaining wall's been completed. I don't know if you've driven by the site, but the wall looks like it's in the right spot. It looks good. The site's been stabilized. Where you see the grade, where the proposed building is going to go is plus or minus. We're within a foot of that final grade. So if you happen to drive by the site, where you see that, that pad area is where the building elevation will be. From an architectural standpoint, we're going to be carrying the same kind of concept that we had with our previous approvals. Let's see if I can build and bring this up. Although this wasn't submitted to you, we were working on this as we were going through the, through the process. But again, same kind of features. We have the wood accents, the cupolas, the shake on the gables. Stone accent on the bottom in access, again, front and rear of the building. We'll be obviously submitting these formally to the ARC for their review. But that would give you an idea of the building concept. And then if I can kind of zoom down, I can kind of show you some, some traffic movements for the site on an expanded view here. This is a, an expanded view here to see. From a stormwater standpoint, I think our initial approval, we had an overall development scheme for this, for this project. Where we had the existing building in the front, a building in the back and possible future pad site at the corner of Route 216. When we did our original SWIP, we incorporated those impervious services. Obviously with this iteration, we'll go through and we'll amend the SWIP, set an erosion control plan, again, working with the Board of Health on our water sewer approvals. But this would give you an overall, again, of the site on an expanded view with showing some drainage. The previous site plan approval had a highway work permit where we reconfigured the entrance of the existing building. That's now one-way circulation. We opened and closed that highway work permit. So that entrance has been approved by the DOT and the permit's actually been closed out. So we're kind of moving on to this, the second phase here with.
Can you explain, you said that work has been done?
Yes. Work's been completed and we did close the permit out with DOT.
So the driveway out to, out to 216 has been constructed in this way?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. The DOT been notified at all of the, of the use change?
DOT is, will probably be circulating as part of this process.
Okay.
For this application. But I think when we originally did our original, original first approval, there was always the idea of having some kind of retail component in that future pad area. So there was consideration for future development of parcel. Whoops.
So Brian, are you saying there is not now a potential retail space at the corner? Or there is?
Possible future.
Okay.
We don't know yet when and if it'll be there. But we wanted to be clear with our intent that when and if certain utilities become available, you know, if it is developed, we would obviously be back, be back in front of you.
Got it.
But as of right now, it's not on the table. But from an infrastructure standpoint on the stormwater side, we did plan for it.
Got it.
From an impervious standpoint. With these iterations here, you can see we have a WV40 tractor trailer movement around it. So again, following my cursor, we kind of come in and come around the building. Our loading area is in the back here. Our refuge enclosure is toward the rear of the property here. Again, this, the parking in the rear of the building was meant for employee parking. We could adjust that with signage. We have a couple of handicap spaces here that would lead into a couple of drop curbs that would get you into the rear building. We show concrete curbs and sidewalks around the building, minimum five foot in width in the front and in the back, let's say west and east, if they're a little bit wider.
Right, it does look like you're clipping the front of the building here a little bit though, right? The flow path of that tractor trailer?
Yeah, I see that. We'll tighten that up.
Okay.
I want to see if you're looking.
The only other circulation issue, and I haven't had a chance to formally review this plan and it's going to come again anyway. If you have that directional flow around the building, you're going to need some signage to make sure.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we added a one-way do not enter. We do have a signage plan on that. As far as landscaping goes, town engineers commented on maybe a disease-resistant evergreen for the area. So we'll incorporate that into our plans and then some more flowering plans, plants and trees. The concept is, is, you know, between these two parking areas, you'd have a landscape island in between. You'd have a landscaped corridor here. Let me see if I can zoom to our plan, if I can find it. And here's more of a landscape. So we would have landscaping along this corridor in between our parking areas. Some grass landscaping up on the hill and some evergreen trees toward our residential component on the south. Again, incorporating the previous agreements that we had with our neighbor to the north and our neighbor to the west to look at screening and identify points that maybe need to be filled in with some plantings. So the items that were incorporated in our previous site plan have been carried over to this one. Again, the big change with this one is one story, 21,000 square feet. Retail office and a restaurant use. As far, as far as fire separation, knocks boxes on the doors, posting. With our architetchals that we just recently, that we showed you, we'll provide a floor plan with entry and exit locations in our next submission. But as far as a fire suppression, the thought process was is to break up the building the way it's configured to be under the threshold for sprinkling and just create two hour fire separations, fire separations between certain components of that building so we could avoid sprinkling. So initially, that's, this is our presentation, just to give the board an update that we have moved from the wall to an amended site plan and starting the process again.
Questions or comments by board members?
What kind of restaurant are we talking about? Are we talking about Patsy's too or are we talking about Burger King?
I think it'd be more of the local flair.
Okay.
Is there pedestrian walkway that will get people from the building to parking and even to the front of the project at Route 216?
I don't show, I don't show a connection path from the rear building to the front of 216. I could talk to the applicant about that if we can show some kind of connectivity. If I'm going to show it, it would probably be on the southern side of the access aisle. So I would say if we're going to show something, it would be, you know, along this corridor here.
Got it.
You might want that if there's going to be some sort of restaurant there, people coming down from the rail trail to cut across and cut through and try and not walk through parking spaces.
Did we talk about water and sewer?
No, we didn't. So expanding on sewer, not in a water and sewer district currently. The site is served by an existing well that supports the existing restaurant and retail use up front. We do have an active application in front of the Board of Health to drill a new well in the rear. It's located north of the loading area in front of the retaining wall. We have submitted an application to have the permission to drill a well to see what we have for quantity and quality of water on site. The applicant, specific to sewer and sewage disposal, has been working with the town engineer for a possible pump station in the front of the property that would tie into four corners. The town engineer could probably speak more to that, but that was the concept, that we would incorporate some kind of pump station to serve the site. We would abandon the existing sewer treatment on site and convert it over to the pump station for tie-in.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Yes, Dave.
What's your plan for heating cooling?
They're probably doing propane. So propane, we showed two buried thousand gallon tanks in the back here behind the refuse, actually behind the loading area. I'll zoom in. We showed a couple of bollards around that, but they would be buried. Let's see if I can move over. Oops, I'm too far. So if you can see, they have the loading zone right here. And then we showed two buried propane tanks here with some bollards around it.
So I understand what you're doing to eliminate the need for sprinklers. At least going to have smoke, heat and CO detection?
Yes. And we'll put it under the plan and that'll be supported with the building plans that get submitted.
Okay, any comments or questions from our professionals?
I just have a few. Just on the lighting, Brian, I'm just thinking to avoid neighbor impacts, just shield all the ones along the residential property lines. And then I figure, some of this we may have done last time, I just don't remember. Also, I was just thinking, the line of trees, the line of arbivory that's along the southern property boundary, I'm thinking maybe you might want to stagger a few in there because that'll build up a nice buffer when you go to develop the other portion. And that may, may help with some neighbor impacts as well. There's no fence detail shown right now for the pump station. It might be premature, but just when you have it, include it. ARC referral, we'll need to refer them to the ARC. And then, let's see, we have to also declare lead agency.
Yes.
And the patio area, this is just a comment. We're currently working on an outdoor dining application. But if you are, if you know you're going to have a restaurant there, if it comes about before the site plan is complete, you might want to show that if you're planning to do outdoor dining on the site plan. Because then you don't have to get the permit renewed every year. And you could just show it as part of your site plan. So it's just a housekeeping thing. And I think that's it, all that I have.
Okay. Any other questions or comments by professionals?
Our, one other comment that Brian didn't touch on, we had just put it out there for the board to consider. The proposed sewage pump station is right at the entrance. So you would see that as soon as you pull in. So we suggested maybe they could find a little bit of a better hiding spot for it on the site. So you don't, the first thing you see isn't the sewage pump station. As much as I love sewage pump stations, I'm thinking it might take away from the project and the beautiful building.
Yeah, we'll work with the applicant in the engineering department to see if we can, look a little snazzier.
Okay, got it.
I think from a traffic perspective, we, I mean, just to submit to us just a breakdown of the different uses and the generated traffic. And I mean, I'm assuming it's like a sit-down restaurant, not a fast food restaurant?
Correct.
So just get an understanding of what kind of traffic generation there would be there.
Okay. Could I have a motion to declare lead agency?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And may I have a motion to refer the applicant to the ARC? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries.
Thank you, guys.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Jackson, 149 Jackson Road.
Thank you. Brian, is that?
That's me.
You're representing the applicant?
Yeah. Think you're ready. It's a holiday treat. So this is the Jackson line realignment and subdivision. We're on Jackson Road. We have two existing parcels.
We're on Jackson Road, we have two existing parcels, and after the lot line realignment and subdivision, we're going to have three. So what we have here, here's your plat, we have two existing lots, and what we're proposing to do is basically shorten Lot 2, expand the rear portion of the proposed Lot 3, and we're going to obtain a little bit of area from Lot 1, which is a shaded area here, and add it to Lot 3. We're basically, the reason why we have this configuration is to meet the flag lot requirements. So when we look at a flag lot in East Fishkill, you need twice the area for the lot acreage for the flag, and you can't count the pole. So basically, we've realigned with the Jacksons working with their neighbor to reconfigure lot lines to allow us to meet zoning for that flag lot requirement. So again, Lot 1 has an existing house for three acres in size, and then this is an existing house here, and then what we're doing is we're creating this rear lot here. So we have our 50-foot pole, and we're proposing a house in the rear of the property, offset from the house in the front, and then we have this larger area in here just to meet that flag width requirement. The site will be served by on-site septic, we've had Board of Health out there, we've done soil tests, we've submitted an initial design, and we will be hooking up to central water. We'll have to work with the water department to get a will-serve letter for capacity specific to water, and through working with the Board of Health, we're locating neighboring wells and septics, and we have them on the plan, but not during the submission, but we have been working with that department to satisfy their requirements. We're basically going from two lots to three lots for a new house.
Okay. Question or comments? Board members or professionals?
I only had one question, but I think you may have answered it, I just want to confirm. So the reason you have that little jog in the back is just to preserve as much property as you can for the neighboring property? I was just going to say, clean it up, but if it's to be that, it's fine.
Yes. Brian, you mentioned with the health department, I guess, separation from well and septic. Which of these lots, if not all of them, are connected to municipal water? Just refresh my memory.
I think there was a lot in the, actually, they may be all on.
Proposed lot?
They may be all on wells, I mean, a central water over there.
They all are, three of them?
Yeah.
So I'm saying, is there a separation concern?
I think I'm just used to, we're used to putting it on paper.
Okay.
So we usually have to show all wells and septics within 300 feet, but I think we're all on central water over here.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to declare intent to be lead agency.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And since this is a minor subdivision, we can waive a public hearing, unless somebody feels strongly about requiring a public hearing. I'll accept a motion to waive the public hearing requirement.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And is there anything else we need to do at this time? I don't think so, Michelle? Anything else? Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Look at the next one. Pardon me?
You got the next one.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is Fire Springs Bridges subdivision. Applicant requesting two three-month extensions for the subdivision plat. Is there anything you need to offer by way of comments?
The only thing I'll offer is that we have Board of Health approval, we have signed miles from the applicant, surveyor, Board of Health sitting in the planning department. We were just waiting on the applicant to satisfy any outstanding concerns with the town engineer. Hopefully we're close, but from an engineering standpoint, we're in good shape, so we just need a little bit extra time to hopefully get your signature on those plans.
Got you.
And I've been working with the applicant's attorney, too, on the non-disturbance area declarations, so they are making progress and we're in contact with the professionals.
Okay, excellent. Well, we do have a resolution to approve that. The name of subdivision plan, Fire Springs Bridges subdivision, name of applicant, Fire Springs Bridges, location, 520 Eater Road, and resolution offered by Planning Board member John Eichman. Whereas the Fire Springs Bridges subdivision was granted final approval for a three-lot subdivision on April 18th, 2023, was granted a three-month extension through July 18th, 2024, with an additional 30 days through August 18th, 2024, whereas the applicant requested and received an additional three-month extension through November 18th, 2024, whereas the applicant is requesting two additional three-month extensions starting on November 18th, 2024, and extending through May 18th, 2025, whereas the applicant will provide a plan to the town engineer that satisfactorily addresses and corrects the existing encroachments in the town right-of-way by the applicant, and whereas the applicant is awaiting approval from the Department of Behavioral and Community Health, and now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby extends final subdivision approval through May 18th, 2025, for the above project, as represented on a map entitled Bridges Subdivision Prepared by Dane Stokosa Engineering PC, dated May 23rd, 2022, and last revised March 30th, 2023, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the submission of a plan to the town engineer that satisfactorily addresses and corrects the existing encroachments in the town right-of-way. Number two, all conditions contained in the original resolution of subdivision approval dated 4/18/23 must be met. Number three, recreation fees in the amount of $12,500 due to the town of East Fishkill prior to the signing of the subdivision plat in final form by the duly authorized officer of the East Fishkill Planning Board. Number four, the applicant addresses the comments on 21524 memorandum from the town engineer to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Budso.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
John Vaignoli.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye, carries. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. So I believe that brings all of the business to a conclusion. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
It's okay, I just wanted to just explain the referral really quickly. There's a referral from the town board on an omnibus law coming, and we'll send that around to you. It's just, it's a lot of cleanup of code, including we're alphabetizing the permitted uses list, we're adding a couple of things to clarify some of the sheds and accessory structures law that we have. It hasn't changed anything, it's just making it look better and easier to decipher. And there's a, hey, gentlemen, gentlemen, I'm sorry, we're still, we're still, and then there's going to be a couple of new, there's an outdoor dining ordinance, there's an electric vehicle charging station, some new requirements for that, or laws for that. We're just trying to be proactive on that front, and there's a couple of additional small special permits. So when I send it around, just give me an email if you have any questions on any of it. I think it's going to be in front of the town board in January.
Okay.
For consideration.
So we should respond as quickly as possible?
Yes.
Okay? Very good. Well, so with that, does that complete our business?
It does.
I'll accept a motion to adjourn again.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Merry Christmas, everybody. Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.